Well, good evening and welcome to the County Commissioners' meeting of May 9th, 2022. I would like to call with the meeting to order. For those that of you that would like to stand with us, feel free.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes of April 11, 2022.
No passage?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? If not, I call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The vote is five and oh. The next is the informational reports and the presentations, and they were in your packet. We don't have anybody here for that.
No.
Okay, moving on. The next item is comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, hearing none? Okay.
Madam Chair, I move we go to executive session for an item that's on the likely be on the agenda later.
I think we're going to keep it where it is because we have an appointment to make. Okay, I just found that out when I came in. Okay. You know, yep. Okay, what next on the items are the consent agendas.
No passage of the agenda?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Would you like to read the items under the consent calendar? Be happy to.
Okay, yep.
Under the consent calendar, 22-041 authorized the county assessing contract with the town of Goreham between July 1, 2022 and July 30, 2025. The second item, 22-042 authorized the extended MOU between York County Jail and Cumberland County Jail for June 1, 2022 to June 1, 2023. Third item, 22-043 approved the bid award to Quirk Auto for the purchase of two jail transport vehicles for $33,707 per vehicle by the jail. 22-44 approved the appointment of Stephen M. Woods to the Cross Insurance Board of Trustees to represent District 1. And 22-045 approve the appointment of Eric Sylvan, Deputy Fire Chief of the Town of Freeport, to the Cumberland County Regional Communications Board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't know if we necessarily have to take it out of the consent agenda, but because Steve Woods is here, if he wants to say a few words.
Okay, that would be great.
We welcome you to.
Great, thank you very much. Just wanted to say that after 20 years living in Maine, in the last year, my wife and I and our kids moved to Portland. We were in Yarmouth. And I've been involved in event management, sports management, venue management for many, many decades. So, and I have a close affinity for the cross arena. So I would be honored to serve as one of the trustees and work with the county in terms of creating the best environment and the best business practices to make the arena continue its history of success. So thank you for considering me, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Great, thank you all.
I was gonna say, we have often remarked that the, that board is the best qualified board that sits anywhere in Maine. You really have colleagues, and congratulations to you and thanks for being willing to do it. But your colleagues, I think you'll find are quite, quite a pleasure to work with.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you all.
Okay, do we have a motion? Was there a motion and all that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, fine. If there is no other discussion, I call for vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Five and oh. The next under is Opera Business. Would Jim, I'll turn this right over to you.
Okay, the first item on the, under Opera is we are requesting to amend item 22-014 for the purchase of the Cross Insurance Arena half-house curtain due having the need to bring forth a revised contract for the commissioners to approve. The background in all this is as the commissioners are aware, back in February of this year, and that's the order 22-014, we brought before you the original bid of the curtain and associated mechanical structure to lift the curtain up into the rafters. That award was somewhere in the vicinity of $84,000 that the commissioners awarded out of Opera funds. In the meantime, we've been working with the vendor. The vendor has had a hard time finding the, the weight of the curtain and such, and has had to go and work with the general manager at the Cross Insurance Arena on an alternative that was bid because there just wasn't the ability to, because of supply chain issues, get what was originally spec'd. Both have come to the agreement that the curtain that they have landed on would be a better curtain for the type of performances within the arena. That comes with a cost. It's, it's a little more denser, it's a little more heavier, which then had to go and they had to look at the lift system that would be lifting this curtain, and they had to upgrade the lift system. So we not only have the impact of heavier curtain, but then the heavier motors to lift the system to, and then there's, of course, is the increase in freight and shipping to get this, this curtain to Portland, Maine. In all in all, it's an additional $13,555. Because of the, the award of contract back in February, we've needed to bring it back before the commissioners for an amendment to the original contract. And then there was a small little glitch that we had back in February, if you may remember, or you saw it in the, the position paper. There was a, the position paper read that we were awarding an $87,000 contract. The invoice that was in the packet was an $84,000 contract invoice. And so there was an adjustment or a motion and a vote taken by the commissioners back then to go with the lower amount. Looking at it now, we should have gone with the higher amount, as it was $87,300, somewhere in that range. So, all in all, this item is being brought forth before you to amend the contract to reflect the true cost of this half-house curtain with accessory motors and cabling for $100,821.61. And that will get us where we need to be for that project. Thank you.
No passage?
Second.
Do we have any discussion or questions or concerns? Hearing none, seeing none? I call for vote. All those in favor to approve?
Aye.
Five and oh. Okay, the next item, Jim, that is also over yours?
Yes, this item is an appointment to the Opera Advisory Committee. An individual, Joseph Zamboni, a local resident, has inquired and about serving on the Opera Committee. And as the other committee members, we're bringing it before you this evening to formally accept the, appoint Mr. Zamboni to the Opera Advisory Committee. I believe he was at the last meeting, so his interest has already started, and he's looking to roll up his sleeves and get going on it.
No passage?
Second.
Do we have any more questions?
I just have, what's his background?
He's a lawyer. Works for, he has worked for the state in the elderly services area. I talked to him for a very, you know, detailed 30-second conversation.
But from you, that's very detailed.
That's a long conversation, Jim. Commissioner Gordon.
Yeah, on the document, can I suggest that we make sure that it shows that he's District 5?
Right, he is from my district, yeah. He lives in Portland somewhere.
Yes, and my apologies for that when I amended the position pa, I took the old position paper that the last time we appointed, and you know what happens when you do that? Old information gets left on there. So that, that was my fault for keeping District 3 in there. Nice catch, Commissioner.
Okay, if there's no other questions or anything, I call for vote. All those in favor of the appointment?
Aye.
It's five and oh. Next under new business. Would Jim, I'll turn that also over to you.
All right, Kristen Stiles, CDBG Director is here this evening. Tonight is the second reading and final reading of the five-year consolidated plan as well as the 2022 annual action plan. And I will stop right there and kick it off to Kristen on any updates that she wants to give the commissioners.
Thank you. As Jim Boyden and I, we are here for our 2022-2026 five-year consolidated plan, which includes an updated citizen participation plan and our 2022 annual action plan. I was very hopeful that we would have final allocations by, before tonight's meeting so we could go over the final awards that you will be voting on tonight. Unfortunately, we have been told that we will be getting them on Wednesday, which is very convenient. So I would be happy to go over the five-year consolidated plan or annual action plan. Nothing in that has changed since I presented to you in April. What I thought might be a good idea is to go into a little bit more detail on our contingency plan so you know exactly what we are approving for, for funding, what we would like for approved for funding. So as you may know, for our public service activities, we are capped at 15% of our annual allocation. The county projects on this sheet that I've handed you are in green, the ones that are possibly going up or down depending on our final allocation. The city of South Portland is in blue, and Bridgeston is in yellow. So for public services, the county did not hit our 15% cap. We're almost 30,000 short of hitting our 15% cap, so we're not expecting any change in those allocations there. For Bridgeston and South Portland, they did go all the way up to the top of their cap. So for those projects, all of those programs will be increased or decreased equally depending on what that final allocation is. For our public infrastructure projects, for the county, we had less projects come in than funding available. So we are expecting to have roughly $156,000 that we can put towards prior-year funded CDBG projects in the construction category that have run over budget due to construction cost increases. The municipal oversight committee greatly appreciates this and approves setting aside that money because there's a lot of projects that have budget shortfalls right now. So that number will either increase or decrease depending on our final allocation. The city of South Portland has chosen to either increase or decrease any additional money that they get into broadband expansion. And the city of, or, excuse me, the town of Bridgeston will put all of that money into their one construction project, which is the Elm Street Sidewalk Project. The only other category that would possibly change is our budgets, excuse me, our admin budget. And all of the budgets on here have a 20% cap, which we have not reached the 20% cap on, on, for any of our towns. But what we will be doing is, if there is a decrease, our budget will go down. If there's an increase, our budgets will not go up in that category because we, we feel that we have enough funding to run the program. Excuse me for running out of breath. I'm very pregnant. I'm happy to answer any questions or go over any more information about the five-year consolidated plan, the annual action plan, or citizen participation plan.
Do we have any more questions? Thank you very much and for all your, all your hard work on this, because I know it's not easy.
I am, I am wondering whether, whenever it comes to us, it seems so orderly. Is it like that at the committee level or?
Pardon?
Is it, is it this orderly at the committee level when these, when these lists are being generated?
It's, on the municipal oversight committee is extremely orderly. They, they do a fantastic job of understanding how much construction projects cost and how much the need is for public services. I know for a fact that it is not like that in every town and city across the country. Some get very heated and very contentious, but we are really lucky to have the municipal oversight committee that we have. I think sometimes in Bridgeston and South Portland, it gets, gets a little bit more heated, but yes. There's a lot of passion behind the, the scores that are released.
Go ahead.
If there's no other questions or anything, I call for vote. All those in favor of passing this?
I think we, we need a motion. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, I thought we did, huh?
I'm sorry, one, one last thing. We need a, a second public hearing. So I don't know if that happens before you vote. I don't, I don't see anyone here.
Just open it up for public hearing.
Okay, now I'm gonna open this up for what public, our hearing?
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public or anybody?
I move passage.
Second.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing is on this. And now I will call for, with the vote. Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five and oh. Okay. Moving on to item 22-0487. Would Jim?
Thank you. This item is being brought forth for Commissioner Resolve, which is a, or actually a proclamation to declare May 15th, May 15th to the 21st, 2022 as National Law Enforcement Week.
Did we do anything for them? Or just Kevin or?
The Sheriff's Office takes the lead on that, yes. And that is the, I think the commissioners have had probably five or six different weeks thrown at them in the last three months, so this is the last of them at this point. Though I do have HR angling for a September proclamation for HR Week.
Oh, really?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
How about what commissioners week?
We only get an hour. We only get an hour. We don't get a week.
Oh, we get. Okay, okay, if there are another, if there are no more questions, I call for a vote on this?
No passage?
Oh, yeah. Don't have a second. Okay, now I call for a vote.
So are you in a hurry to get out of here?
No, but you guys, you guys would usually do the passage before I even have it out of my mouth. Okay. The next item. Would Jim, 22-049?
Yes, this item is an item that we amended the agenda this morning on a conversation that the, the chair and I had this morning. And that was around the most recent uptick in COVID cases that we're seeing within our state and our region. The state of Maine is leading the nation in the seven-day. So what's the right terminology? The 70 case rate across the United States. We're, we're averaging about 407 cases per day. And the commissioner and I were talking about remote meetings and when or if we go into a remote meeting, what do we need to do? As the commissioners are aware, there was a state statute that was developed to govern remote meetings. This was a result of kind of that trial period that went through during the initial part of the pandemic that we all went, all public bodies in the state went into the remote world. And that got spun into a legislative action and now state statute. In response to the state statute, we needed to have a policy here at the local level. That policy has a number of criteria that need to, at least one of the criteria need to be met to go into a remote meeting. And so one of those criteria is a state of emergency or emergency declaration by the legislative board. So this evening, we bring back the declaration of emergency that the commissioners had in place for a while. It had ended back in December 31 of 2021, and we were inclined not to approve it at that time or extend it. However, here we are. And we feel as though by putting this back before you and having it in a state of emergency until the end of this year, we'll give the commissioners the flexibility and the staff the green light to duck and weave as needed through this pandemic. And what, you don't like duck and weave?
No, I do like it.
It will allow us to appropriately address and keep the status quo no matter how heavy or light this pandemic presents us. So I modified the declaration, brought in up-to-date numbers, carved off a lot of the requirements that we've had in the past. More streamlined declaration of emergency for your review and authorization this evening if you feel appropriate. Thank you.
What's everybody's thoughts on this?
Madam Chair, isn't this also a recommendation of the CDC, State CDC?
Not as much recommend, the, the CDC right now is recommending that indoor people wear masks, whether you're a staff or a visitor. And so that's, that's a recommendation that was put in place last Friday and implemented first thing this, this morning. So we are doing that here at the courthouse. The state is moving in that direction. And so, you know, we are starting to kind of peel back some of the freedoms that we've experienced over the last 30 days. And hopefully, this is only a, a flash, and a couple of weeks we'll be out of it. But we need to protect ourselves while it's here.
Yeah, my, my observation, I started, when I saw, read the news, I started masking up again. I'm kind of getting used to not having to, you know, wear a mask everywhere I went. I started doing that whenever I'm inside. And my, my observation is a week ago, I would go shopping, there's almost nobody there except the staff of the store, you know, at Hannaford's had masks on. I went in a couple of days ago, 75% of the customers were masked up. So I think this is, I think the public is, is up to speed on us here. I think we ought to be too, so I'd certainly support, support this. I like the flexibility of this, so we don't have to keep coming back to tinker with this thing because I, I trust the staff to, I mean, you know, you guys are in this building during the work week and we are not. So I, I mean, you need to have the flexibility to do that. And this gives us, I think, the flexibility to move our meetings on to Zoom without a lot of, you know, without a lot of anxiety about doing it. And we've tested that over the last year, and it's, it works, it works extremely well. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think this is, I think this is a sensible thing to do at this point.
Neil.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Carr. I think it's a prudent thing to do. And the way it's designed, it is flexible, and it gives us the opportunity to, you know, to make the decision of the moment if we need to. But at least I think it protects the people in the building, protects us, and sets a good example. So for all those reasons, I support it.
Does this allow us to, if a commissioner can't come to the meeting, which is Zoom in? Or is that something completely different?
That is one of the criteria that we have. We can meet in person. And if a commissioner is physically unable to make it to the meeting, that commissioner can Zoom in, but we also have to allow the public to Zoom in too. I know that the equipment that we have ordered to make that ability reality in this room came in last week. So IT and facilities will be working to install a couple cameras and the intercom and mic system for this room so that we can do that.
Is there any other comments? I need some motions.
No passage?
Second.
I call for vote. Is all those in favor of passing this item? Okay, five and oh.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes everything on the agenda, and now we will go into comments.
Can I have a question?
Oh, yes.
Now it's passed a week, so are we going to meet on Zoom?
Well, I think it's gonna be month by month because we'll see what it is like with next.
In June.
In June, and then if we feel.
Will be announced.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, okay.
If we get down here and there's nobody here, you gotta go home.
Well, I didn't know if we were gonna try to make that.
Tonight, I would support if we, if we wanted to. I'd certainly support that motion.
Okay, now moving on to comments from the county manager.
Just one comment this evening. I just wanted to announce the latest ACE Award winners that we had here for 2021. And first, I'd like to thank Commissioner Wetonis for joining us at the award ceremonies here at the courthouse. We had a, a number of ACE Award winners from a variety of departments. Just running down through the list, we have Corrections Officer Scott Gibbons, Corrections Officer Sean Morissette, Facilities Employee Candace LaRue, Facilities Employee Tom Page, District Attorney's Office Wendy Sperling. And hopefully, this is aired after Wednesday because I have to give Deputy Christian Stickney, Stickning, his ACE Award on Wednesday afternoon. So I think, I'm, good luck, I can announce it today. And then we had Human Resource Employee Amy Jennings. And as the commissioners are aware, annually, we have Employee of the Year that is selected from that short list of ACE Award winners. And this year's, actually, I should say, 2021 Employee of the Year went to Amy Jennings in the HR office. And I don't need to tell you everything that Amy's done over the last number of years as really the pandemic has been on her shoulders. And so we're thrilled to, that she was nominated, and we're thrilled to recognize her as the Employee of the Year for 2021. So that concludes my communications. Thank you.
Okay, now, yes, Commissioner Gordon.
Jim, the issue with Fay.
It's not an issue. Fay Loopy is retiring at the end of July. We have Fay announced that on May 4, I believe it was, when she had her most recent committee meeting. And we advertised on May 5. And so it is out on the streets. We're hoping that we will get someone as terrific as Fay, though we do understand that it's huge shoes to fill. But we are starting so early because Fay and I have had a couple of dialogues around the bringing someone in two, three, two or three weeks ahead of Fay's retirement dates just so that they can shadow Fay and understand what Fay goes through for her work responsibilities and tracking of grants and things like that. So we're hoping to have someone onboard probably by mid to late June in hopes of making that schedule or desire of Fay and myself a reality. We wish Fay all the luck because she definitely deserves to enjoy retirement.
I'd like to echo Jim. I've attended a number of her meetings. The issues with domestic violence, et cetera, that she's put forth and been, been able to. Tutelage is not only known in this state, but is known across the country. Tutelage is not only known in this state, but is known across the country. And that's why she's been very good at getting the grants that she's received and so forth for us. My hat's off to her. Another great book.
Now, comments from the executive staff? Is Alex?
Just a few things. We're at that point in time where we're starting to keep a very close eye on the 2022 budget. So far, so good. Certainly not as sort of off from prior years budget-wise. You can start to see definite signs of inflation affecting some of the expenses. We aren't hitting any warning buttons yet, but it's running much closer to sort of right on the line. And so, certainly, you might hear back from Jim or I in a month or two on that particular piece. 2021 audit is closing in towards completion and going fine. The comment I'd just make there, that you folks have heard from me a fair amount, we have received more federal funding through a variety of grants, CDBG, of course, the ARPA funds, and a lot of the ongoing funds such as Fay's VAWA grants. And the name of game the past few years has been all about compliance testing. Thus far, sort of the effort that we put in with the sort of, the strong crew, the strong procedures we've put in place seems to be holding up. But it's definitely sort of the New World Order, where the compliance testing for sub-receipients and that need to really stay on these things, and for that to be something that, it's just very tight from here moving forward, and just something for everyone to be aware of as we keep going along. That's all I got.
Don.
I just have three items. The end of March, early April, we rolled out diversity, equity, and inclusion training to super, to our staff here at the courthouse, deans and assessing. We look at this as kind of a first phase of a more comprehensive program moving forward. Oops, I'm sorry. We look at this as a first phase of a more comprehensive program moving forward. I want to thank Commissioner Wetonis and Commissioner Gordon for coming and sitting in on one of those trainings with Mandy Levine, who's an accomplished presenter, national presenter, in fact. So, we've talked about another staff meeting in the fall to sort of roll out the next phases of a more comprehensive program. So, that is off to a good start. County Manager Gailey had mentioned COVID. We've talked about COVID. We have seen an uptick in the number of COVID employees who have tested positive for COVID over the last couple of weeks, particularly the last week, and have been out for close contact awaiting testing. We had a particularly heavy weekend. Amy Jennings, again, who's the point of contact for employees with COVID-related issues, had about eight hours of time over the weekend dealing with talking to staff and employees on guidance and telling them what to do. So, we do have a number of employees who are out of work because of COVID, but we are hoping it is just kind of a last surge or flash in the pan, and it will go by quickly. But we've said that a few times before over the last two and a half years. And I, you know, I can't, you know, say enough about Amy, how she's just so steadfast and dedicated and always available, weekends, and to make sure that our employees are safe and following the latest guidance out of the Maine CDC, which we've been doing consistently. Thirdly, is our recruitment efforts. Our recruiter, Mary Payson, and Tom Witham, who's a correction officer at the jail, who works with us a couple of days a week, to try to enhance our recruitment of corrections officers. We are still down quite a number, I'd say in the 60s. It seems like we hire correction officers and we lose them. So, we're like treading water. But I will say, we have noticed an increase in the number of applicants for corrections positions, and there's a more robust outreach. We still haven't gotten to where we want to be yet, but we're getting there with software, applicant tracking system. But one of the challenges that we still have is we need to figure out a way to streamline and reduce the amount of time it takes to get a candidate from the application phase through the end. And where we still get held up a little bit is on the backgrounds. So, staff can be waiting for days for the results of a background. So, we're still trying to figure out how we can reduce that time, so we don't have employees out there hanging out for a few days, and we don't want to lose them. So, we're still working with the sheriff's office on reducing that. But we are getting a good number of candidates coming in, so that's encouraging. So, we hope to put a presentation on for the commissioners. Jim and Alex and I have talked about maybe a June workshop that's not etched in stone, so they can give you an update and a demonstration on the work that they've been doing. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, Don. On the recruitment, that you just said, you know, that there's a holdup in the background checks. Who can, would do those? Who's qualified, or, you know?
Well, the background checks also include a polygraph. So, our polygraph, the employees, the staff who are qualified to do polygraphs is limited. So, Detective Joel Barnes is doing the backgrounds at the sheriff's office, and when we have a number of candidates in the fold, it does take some time to do them. But we don't have as many staff that are actually doing polygraphs as we used to. I think they're farming some of that out. But again, it's like workflow. It's, you know, it's one thing on somebody else, somebody's plate that they have to do as part of their job duties, but we're trying to find a way to get that moving a little faster and avoid delays. We've still got work to do there.
And then my other question is regarding COVID. Did I know in the past, there was a, there was a halt on our travel and our training? And where we're so high, you know, is in the state of Maine. Do you think that's something that we need to put in to affect, say, like for the next 30 to 60 days?
Well, here is what I think. I think we need to keep our eyes on, we are, as Jim mentioned, he gave you the statistics about where the state of Maine falls in terms of COVID cases. I think we need to keep track of that, and we certainly did address out-of-state travel and travel to conferences and trainings that perhaps, you know, would be, I guess we separated what was essential training versus what could wait. And I think we need to do the same thing over the next 30 to 60 days. See what happens to the COVID positives over the next week or two. But yeah, I think we need to go back almost to where what we were doing a year or so ago.
And I can jump in and add. I have asked department heads to provide me trainings that their employees will be going to over the next 90 days, so I have an understanding of what's in-state, what's out-of-state. It's actually safer to go out-of-state for a training than it is in-state right now. So.
Wants to be around us.
So, that list I hopefully will have complete by maybe tomorrow, if not Wednesday.
Thank you. Well, Catherine, do you have anything that you want to?
Travis Henry about broadband.
Okay, yep.
I can't present on it, but I can pass it out.
Okay, yep.
And that is in response to, I think it was Commissioner Cludia asked about the status of broadband expansion in the county.
Thank you.
At the last meeting. And so, Travis is unable to join us this evening, but he wanted to make sure that the information was shared.
Thank you, Don. Okay, now, we're moving on to the commissioners. Commissioner Cludia.
Well, I want to congratulate everybody that's going to be asked to leave the local high school with a diploma in hand. That's coming up, and quite a bit of that, I think, is still likely to happen in the cross arena. And of course, I'm sure the last round of high school sports is underway by now, and so that's always an exciting thing. I have to admit that I'm glad we had the resolution tonight about the masking and COVID situation. My only hope is that, apparently, the claim was made, and I don't know if it actually held up over time, that this first wave, which puts us really right in the crosshairs of the highest infection rates in the country. But that happened first in New York State, and as quickly as it came, it left. So, we have some hope that within the next few weeks, it's going to recede again, and that would be very welcome. Other than that, that's it for me.
Commissioner Cowan.
I would just amplify what you had already said. I would add that I'm still very pleased, I think Cumberland County has a very high vaccination rate, notwithstanding that we are, you know, we are sort of in this questionable period where we may, we may have further infections coming along. But I think the long-term, you know, the long-term prognosis is pretty good. Our citizens have stepped up and gotten vaccinated, and my observation earlier, that I think that, at least in the parts of the, parts of the county that I circulate in regularly, I think people are starting to just routinely put on masks and so forth. I would urge anyone to, you know, to do that. It's to protect yourself and to protect everybody else. That's really what this means, we all have to kind of pull together. So, other than that, I'm just looking forward to maybe getting some warm weather and getting outside. I mean, the flowers came up, and then it got cold again, and so, I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen, but I'm starting to get optimistic about spring coming. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you. To follow along with COVID, the thing that I ask is, I support the positions that have taken us. Be pleased if you're qualified, get the additional COVID shot, so that you can protect yourself and others that are close to you. Issues that we don't normally hear about, one of the things that has just been brought to my attention is that the Maine State Police are withdrawing from their rural patrols, which means that, not necessarily for our county, but for other counties, it's going to be a costly situation, because the sheriff's department will have to pick those up. And I think you're going to see an issue be made out of that, because that is one of their requirements by statute. The next thing I would ask is that, if we is, because we've got a legislative year, we're going to have an election, but we're going to have a legislative year, start, a new legislative body start next year, if we have legislation that we want to have promulgated and put forth, we should start to bring that forth with us, with ourselves, so that we can get it presented. I know that the MC, the Maine County Commissioners Association has got a couple of issues, but if we ourselves have them, now's the time to begin to do thinking about that. And I'm glad that the mention about the budget, and I never thought about it, about how the inflation's going to hit our budget, that you mentioned that. That certainly is something important, and it's beginning to show up for not only us, but for our constituents, especially with energy. And that could be a big thing this come this year. In the summertime, a lot of people don't think about it, but that's when the high usage is for power because of air conditioning. So, just being, I respect that, and I'll have to take a look at that. And with that, I turn it back to the chair.
Okay. Commissioner Jameson.
Thank you, Sue. I would just like to add my congratulations to the, as the other commissioners have mentioned, to the soon-to-be high school graduates. You've worked hard. This is a momentous step in your young life, so congratulations to you. Be safe, enjoy your experience, and we are all proud of you out there. I also would, I would like to congratulate Fay Loopy on a, and commend her on incredible service to the county, to the citizens of the state of Maine, particularly in, as it concerns the issues of domestic violence. Lots of people push those issues aside and don't think about it. Fay has lived a career helping to develop systems which will try to stem the tide of that type of activity that no, no, no person, man, woman, or child should experience. She's been a model employee and has done a, and a great member of the leadership team here, and has done a great job. So, Fay, we wish you well, and thank you for all the work you've done for the citizens of the state of Maine and for Cumberland County. And as Commissioner Cludia echoed, I would say, good luck to all of the spring athletes out there. You're in the midst of your seasons, right? About halfway through, and so, we encourage everyone to go out there and support them. And everyone should also finally be safe. Hopefully, this is just a small bump on the road regarding COVID. And so, if you're indoors, wear a mask, be smart, and within a few weeks, hopefully, this uptick will go away. And with that, I seat it over to the chair.
Thank you. I, I don't really have anything to say. I, you know, would support with my, what my fellow commissioners have said, and I'll just let it go at that. So, we can conclude that this is the end of the, well, business, we're part of the meeting. We will be going into executive session, but we will be coming, I will back out, and we're continuing if we have to make.
There will be no need of taking a vote after the executive session, so we'll instruct the camera operator to end the meeting, and the commissioners will just be coming out of executive session to vote on a adjournment. So, there'll be no more action taken.
So, I move we're going to executive session.
Yep.
For the purposes on the agenda.
Does anybody want to take five minutes?
Did you have a vote?
Oh, oh. I call for a vote. Is all those want to, they're going to executive session? Five and all.
It was a deemed vote.